Call the meeting to order, please. This is a Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, January 7th, 2016. The time is 7 o'clock. Please call the roll.
Trustee South.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Longston.
Here.
Trustee Powell.
Here.
Trustee Settiby.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also President Village Kirkfield.
We have a board, please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome back after our holiday break. Both the village manager and I are both sick, so you'll forgive our coals and the clacking of our cough drops as we try to talk tonight, but I hope everyone had a happy and safe holiday and had a chance to spend time with friends and family. First up tonight is public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the village officers' report. My report is first. Just a few things first. Unfortunately, I begin with a sad note. During our break, we lost Richard Triba, who was a dear friend to our village. He was a veteran. He passed away at the age of 83. He was an enormously generous man who gave up himself to everyone he came in contact with, including his village. He served as a preservation commissioner and as an E-911 commissioner. He was a friend. He was a brilliant fellow, a teacher, a very kind, generous man, and he will be missed greatly by all who knew him. And our thoughts and prayers go out to Mary and his family, Richard Triba. With regard to other events, I would just, on a happier note, I encourage everyone, if they haven't had a chance to drive around the village in a while, to take a drive down Blooming Bank Road and Fairbank. Our forestry department has been hard at work on our riverbank restoration efforts, and a number of the River View vistas have opened up now, and they're quite beautiful. We also installed today the historical map at the scout cabin that we had here a few weeks ago when we gave our year-end report. So again, I encourage you now, the weather's had a little break, and we can get out and do some walking again, go over to scout cabin, take a walk along the river. It's a beautiful time of year to do that. And that is all I have. Madam Manager?
I only have three items that I wanted to mention. I wanted to mention that Chief Whitesell will continue to serve on the executive committee for Fight Crime Investing Kids for 2016. I wanted to recognize Chief Buckley, who received Investigator of the Year Award from MABUS Division 10. Also, I wanted to recognize the Finance Department, who received from the Government Finance Officers Association the certificate and award of Financial Reporting Achievement. And that is all I have.
Moving on, next is the Approval and Consent Agenda. Are there any items that any trustee needs to review or consideration? Hearing none, I ask for a motion of the second to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Settiby.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollak. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Settiby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports? Mr. Ballerine.
I'm pleased to announce that probably by the next time we have our board meeting, we will be live on AT&amp;T U-verse. You would go to Channel 99, and that's the public access channel. You hit the button, and then it will scroll, you'll come to another screen, it will scroll down all the villages that have channels, and it's alphabetic when you go down to Riverside and you hit Riverside. And, you know, I scrolled through it tonight and looked at a bunch of villages. We are way above the curve. It's going to be very, very exciting. So, should be there doing the final tests tomorrow, so hopefully by the next meeting, it'll be live on U-verse.
Excellent. Other trustee liaisons?
I'd just like to announce that we do have vacancies on the Landscape Advisory Commission Board, and we're certainly looking for people to apply. And it's a great service to give to the village, very meaningful service, because we are the village in a forest, so please consider serving those of you out there.
And I second that. Anything else? Moving on, next is ordinances and resolutions. First up is an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to accessory structures and residential zoning districts. Director At.
An ordinance for consideration for a text amendments to detached accessory structure garage heights. This was in response to a variation request for increased sidewall height in order to accommodate a car lift. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed whether amendments or clarifications should be made to the zoning ordinance relative to accessory building height and sidewalls. They directed staff to prepare public notice for a text amendment to provide that clarification. Additionally, as a result of the village board's review of that same variation request, trustees discussed the zoning ordinance restrictions on accessory building height and how that may inhibit residents from being creative with storing their vehicles without increasing their impervious surface footprint. And they directed staff to prepare and the Planning and Zoning Commission to conduct a public hearing on a text amendment that would eliminate the 12-foot maximum sidewall height. Two different amendments were prepared for the Planning and Zoning Commission to review at a public hearing, which was held in December. Text Amendment A consisted of the proposed changes that the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed, which was to provide the clarification regarding sidewall and sidewall height. Definitions were proposed to be added to the definition section of the zoning ordinance, one for sidewall and one for sidewall height, so those included some illustrations. You have some updated illustrations before you that hopefully help clarify the proposed definitions a little bit better. The proposed definition for sidewall is "an exterior wall on which the roof rafters or trusses sit. Sidewalls shall not include the walls of gable ends or gambrel ends." The second definition is for sidewall height, and it states that "the height of a sidewall shall be measured from the grade adjacent to the structure to the top plate of the wall. Where there are dormers, if the combined width of the dormers exceeds 15 feet or one-half of the width of the sidewall's facade, whichever is less, the face of the dormer shall be included in the height of the sidewall." And you have the illustration that shows how the height would be measured for those different roof types that are in the same illustration for sidewall. It also includes on there an illustration that shows a dormer and shows how that dormer would be included in the sidewall height. Text Amendment B was also reviewed, and it proposes deleting the sidewall height requirement for detached accessory structures altogether. The proposed amendment adds "the detached accessory structures shall be limited to one story." That is also part of Text Amendment A, I didn't mention that before. And it removes the sidewall height restriction so that the restriction on height for accessory building structures would read as follows. "The maximum height of any detached accessory structure shall be 16 feet, as measured to the peak of the roof, except in the R-1AA and the R-1A districts, where a detached garage not to exceed 18 feet in height, as measured to the peak of the roof, may be permitted to enable the roof pitch of the garage to match the roof pitch of an existing home, except in the case of a flat roof. In those cases, it would still be restricted to the 16-foot peak height." The Preservation Commission reviewed the proposed text amendments at their meeting on the 10th of December, and then, like I said, the public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 16th of December. The Preservation Commission reviewed both proposed amendments and determined that neither amendment would have an adverse impact on the village's landmark status or the general plan of Riverside. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed both. You are provided with a link to that public hearing for you to view. They determined that the 12-foot wall was a reasonable height for sidewalls, and it provided for additional height beyond the typical eight-to-nine-foot sidewall of a garage and should be able to accommodate a car lift. The Commission voted on both amendments and voted 4-0 to approve, to recommend approval, I should say, of Text Amendment A, which is the one that provides the clarification of the definitions for sidewall and sidewall height, and adds the additional clarification that they are limited to one story. They voted 4-0 to recommend denial of Text Amendment B, which amended it to remove the sidewall height restriction. You have a copy of those minutes before you. As I said, I updated those illustrations to provide a little bit more clarification for you. If you're happy with that, those can be incorporated into the ordinance. The ordinance that is before you is the one that was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so it amends it to provide the clarification with the definitions and adds the clarification that they are limited to one story.
Since we have basically two kind of competing ordinances here, what I would suggest is, in lieu of making a motion of the second at this point, that the trustees, that you discuss the two alternatives, and then when we get to a point where someone's ready to make a motion, we can do so. So, would anyone like to begin?
Well, I could start, since I kind of brought it up, so...
Mr. Longston.
I'm still in favor of Amendment V, which removed the 12-foot height. I foresee, I should preface that, though, that I thought the Planning and Zoning did a great job of going through and pointing out that the 12-foot was by intention, not just arbitrary, and I think that was very important to get clarified for our village in that. I still believe that we're being a little bit too restrictive by putting the 12-foot height in there, in the fact that once you get into roof slopes, you may drive a decision for our property owners between having a lower-slope roof that's not warrantable with shingles and able to get their side height that they're looking for and match their residential roof slope. I also feel that by providing a 12-foot point of 12-foot dimension without identifying how that's going to be measured if the garage is on a sloping piece of land, because we identified 12 feet, so is it 12 feet at the best case, or the worst case is the slope? A lot of codes will identify, if we have a height in there, that it's at the mean point of the grade outside of the wall and the plate height in our case. So again, I think that there's a couple things by having a very rigid 12-foot dimension that could be problematic downstream. However, I'm very pleased with the way that the P&amp;Z Commission reviewed it very thoroughly, provided the additional diagrams. Again, I think that that shows that everybody is taking it seriously and trying to be fair and reasonable.
Further comments? Mr. Pollak.
Yes, I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, and the one thing I took out of there that they said adamantly is that allowing a 16-foot tall sidewall on a detached accessory building in residential district would have a detrimental effect on adjacent properties.
16 or 14?
Well, if you took out, the amendment would take it out completely and allow it to 16 feet, correct?
Correct.
And even 14, I think they were pretty adamant that that would have an adverse impact on adjacent properties. You know, they kind of took the position that 12 feet was very generous, which, in my experience, I would agree with that, that a 12-foot sidewall on a detached accessory building on a 50-foot wide lot is a very large building. And to increase that to 14 or 16, I think we will create situations where neighboring properties will be adversely impacted by construction on the adjacent properties in the way of shadows and blocking light and reducing the sense of openness in backyards when you build structures that tall in residential districts on these smaller lots that we have in Riverside. So, I'm inclined to agree with unanimous recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Further comment?
So, you had some information from other towns and villages around here. What was, could you kind of go over that?
Yes. Similarly, most communities restrict to peak height. There are a couple of communities that restrict a height, an eve height, not necessarily a sidewall height, so that's another similar option that we've, you know, we don't say it's to the eve, we say it's a sidewall, but that's another option that another community has taken in there. You see the range go from, you know, 16 to 18, up to a 23-foot peak height, and those are measured based on the type of roof that it is, similar to how we would a principal structure. So, one other community does increase the setback for if you're going to be going over the standard height. I believe they had a, similar to us, a 12-foot or perhaps a 14-foot height, and if you went above that height restriction for accessory structures, then you had to start increasing your setback from the property line. And that was one that the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed, that if we were to eliminate the sidewall height requirement, that should be something that's discussed, is increasing, then requiring the setback to start increasing from the property lines.
So, no one had less than a 16-foot peak?
A one community, I believe, had a 14-foot.
But that was peak, not sidewall?
Right, that was a peak height.
Other comments?
Another question, the, both text amendments that were being considered, none of them would require that the roof pitches match the accessory structure, correct? That's not a requirement?
No, it's not a requirement, and it just makes the allowance for the additional height from 16 to 18 foot, if you're trying to match your principal structure.
Okay. My point at the last meeting was that I think we should be encouraging this type of out-of-the-box thinking, putting lifts in a garage and things like that, in order to get cars either off the driveways, off the streets, you know, it's not uncommon for a family to have three, four cars. Was saying that, I went out and looked at a new-built garage with a 12-foot high sidewall, and as well as the one commissioner that's an architect and drew that sheet in for us here. You could put a lift in a 12-foot, it's a tall garage. I was actually quite surprised at how tall this new-built garage was with the 12-foot So, I'm not backing off the statement that I think we should encourage that, but I think we are encouraging it by the codes that we have presently.
I agree with trustee Ballerine as well. I have the utmost respect for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I thought they were very thorough in this review. Text amendments, I don't think, should be taken lightly. I don't think we've had many requests or any other requests of this nature that I'm aware of. And I do believe that it's been demonstrated that what the petitioner wanted to accomplish could be accomplished within our zoning code. It might not be ideal, but I think it can be accomplished. So again, I support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on their text amendment.
Mr. Pollak.
Could I go ahead and make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion that we concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the ordinance as drafted and as referred to as Option A.
Second.
Much, Mr. Pollak, second by Mr. Ballerine. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Nay.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Settiby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, Zapp. Are you going to present the next one as well? Next up is an ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside relative to contractors and business licensing. Before we get into this, there are a number of items in this proposed ordinance that are new for our village, most particularly the concept of licensing landscape contractors and landscapers. So, what I would suggest is this might be a good opportunity for us to kind of go back to this old concept of first and second reading. I think maybe what we should do tonight is, because I have a feeling that with the holiday break, that this might be the first time a lot of our residents are hearing about this, so I would encourage us, let's just have a discussion about this this evening, and then we will put it on our next agenda for an actual vote, if that's okay with everyone. So with that in mind, Ms. Zapp.
Over the past couple of years, staffs reported an increase in work being done in the village without a permit. As you know, over the past year or two, there's been two matters that involved residents requesting approval for work that was completed by their contractor without a permit. One was the monument on Nut All, and the other was the windows of the historic home. As part of the discussion regarding those two matters, the village board directed staff to review the village code regarding licensing and permitting requirements and the possible revocation of licenses when work is done without a permit. Previously, the village has licensed landscape contractors only when they are completing hardscape work on private property or doing grading or drainage systems. The village requires all contractors doing construction work within the village to be licensed as a contractor. Our requirements for obtaining a contractor's license are a completed contractor's license application, a copy of any state license that they hold that's applicable, a $10,000 surety bond naming the Village of Riverside, a certificate of insurance with the Village of Riverside named as an additional certificate holder, proof of workman's comp, coverage as required by the state, and $100 license fee. Licenses are not issued until the contractor meets all of these requirements, and they are valid for one year from the date of issuance. If a contractor is found doing work without a permit, the permit fees are doubled for our village ordinance, and it's also noted in the contractor's file that they have done work without a permit. So the next time they come up, we can see that they have done work without a permit when they're added to another permit. Additionally, if the contractor is not licensed at the time they are found doing work, the license fee is also doubled. If the contractor does not apply for a permit, typically within a week of being notified, we will issue a citation for appearance at administrative hearing. The village attorney and staff have reviewed the village code regarding contractor regulations and licenses, and based on the previous discussion by the board and review of the code, the following updates are noted in a draft ordinance that's for your consideration. It includes modifying regulations regarding licensing of landscape contractors and landscape maintenance service contractors. It updates regulations for the suspension, revocation, non-renewal, or denial of licenses or permits. It adds a license fee and classification for landscape contractors or landscape maintenance service contractors. It updated dated classification terms as part of the ordinance, including construction and building, drain, layer, sewer contractors, mason and concrete contractors. There's a little bit of updating of the names of the different kinds of contractors. It includes automatic suspension of contractors' licenses for when they are doing work without a permit and are caught within a 12-month period doing work without a permit, two times. A definition for landscape contractors and landscape maintenance service contractors is also included in there. Adds an insurance requirement under the license application, and it adds a failure to obtain required license or permit section to the code. You have the full copy of all those changes before you. Village Attorney Mars was very integral in putting all that together, and Village Manager Francis, so we're all here to answer any questions that you have about the various details that are in there for your consideration. I think the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
I think it's important to note that this, providing this administrative oversight and licensing for people that are doing work within the village affords some assurance to residents that the people that they are using are licensed and bonded, and so that they are protected from anything that might happen on their property or if they do work without a permit, so...
So what I suggest is, we just kind of parse this out for discussion. I assume, perhaps I shouldn't, but with regard to the updating of the obsolete classification terms, we're all okay with that, that we can set aside. There seemed to be pretty strong support for the idea of automatic suspension of contractor licenses if they're caught doing work without a permit twice. Mr. Pollak?
I would like to suggest that we change that to two violations within a three-year period, as opposed to two violations within a one-year period. Seems that someone violating, you know, working without a permit on January 1st, 2014, and able to come back on January 2nd, 2015 is not much of a punishment, given that these contractors may only get one or two jobs in a village in a year. So, I'm thinking, you know, two violations in a three-year period.
So that would be on page six of the proposed ordinance, or your packet, page 101, that number F? So you would suggest?
I think it occurs twice in the ordinance where that's referenced.
Do you know where the other is?
I don't remember where the other one was, Sonia, probably.
But you would say?
Say the next page as well, 101 and 102, it might occur again, too.
Mr. Mars can find it.
Yes, 3-17C, it also has the same language.
What's there, anybody else think about that?
Probably not.
Okay.
And there is a third occurrence on page 11 in the general contractor section.
Okay.
As it comes to fees, I don't have a problem with the landscape contractor fee. I think the landscape service fee of $100 is, I think, out of whack with the actual timeframe that landscape maintenance can work. You know, if you're a roofer, or, you know, some kind, you can work 12 months out of the year for the most part, but if you're a landscaper, you know, you only really work during the summer, or eight or six months, maybe five months out of the year. I just think $100 for lawn maintenance service fee is expensive. I mean, I, you know, when they cut my grass, I mean, dude, they cut it for $20 a week, you know, that's, they wouldn't even get their permit fee with me, you know, for, in a month. It just seems like that's a little heavy.
May I ask the trustees, though, I guess the prior question is, do we want to require licensing of these folks?
I think, it's not just the fee, all of the other requirements. It doesn't matter in here whether you're an electrical contractor, a concrete contractor, a general contractor, or the guy who cuts my grass. You have the same requirements. That's ridiculous.
The insurance requirement will be hard, we won't have any.
Yeah, that's right.
It currently has that. You'll end up with just your very large landscape contractors being able to work and do maintenance in Riverside, which will jack the price up for homeowners.
That's why I asked the question?
Yeah.
Well, you know what I hope.
Again, I was surprised to see this when it came out, it had to do with lawn maintenance. I get it if you're planting big trees, or you're doing hardscape, or you're doing big planting beds, elevated planting beds, or anything like that. That, I think, is where our residents could get treated improperly if, in fact, they didn't have someone looking out for their best interest. As far as, you can't even hire the neighbor kid to mow your yard, according to this now, right?
I think that would be my concern, too. I think it was probably drafted with the view of, I think we all recognize, two or three landscape maintenance firms that are in town that probably do tens of thousands of business a year, and that's probably appropriate for someone doing that level of business, but where do you, where do you cut it off? You're right, if my son's mowing three lawns, this applies to him, maybe, maybe not.
And I suspect that the companies that you're talking about would fall under the landscape contractor definition.
Because they would be doing that work as well, I think that's fair. The other question I would have is, what are other villages doing? Because if we're the only villages requiring these maintenance registrations, it is going to impact the cost to our residents.
Did we take a look at that?
Andrew Francis looked at a lot of that. I can provide at the next media more comprehensive list, but it is very prevalent in northern suburbs to license both landscapers and snow plowing companies. Usually, people utilize one of the same for their property, so especially if they do property damage. Plus, my main concern is making sure that we know who's coming into Riverside, especially for prolonged periods of time, so that we have that information on file. Also, with regard to landscape maintenance individuals, the other concern is that people will say, "Well, I don't fall under that landscape contractor classification to try to go around what the regulations are and the requirements." That would be the only items I would caution you on, but we can provide at the next media a comprehensive list. But River Forest, who, probably in this most immediate area, has it, they require that the licensing fee is $100. If the company does both snow plowing and landscaping, it's $150, same licensing requirements as we've outlined here.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes, I am in favor of requiring licensing for landscape contractor, landscape maintenance contractors. Even had a resident of Riverside who owns a landscape maintenance company suggest to me that we should be doing that. me that we should be doing this, that, that villages he works in requires it, and that this would be a benefit to the village in terms of making sure that we have qualified contractors and that we're able to enforce violations. From my own experience, I know that we, villages get, I don't know about Riverside's level of complaints, but I know villages get lots of complaints about landscape maintenance contractors and their trucks blocking the street, when they snow plow in the wintertime, pushing the snow into the middle of the street and leaving it there to create icing, and a litany of other issues that some companies repeatedly have problems with. Licensing them would allow us to monitor those activities, and if they are told not to do it, and they continue to do it, then we can revoke their license under, you know, the terms we've talked about before. I, I don't care what the fee is, I'm not concerned about the fee. If we want to reduce the fee, that's fine with me, but I do think licensing the contractors allows us to monitor their behavior, make sure that they're, make sure that they're being respectful of the neighbors and, and not violating or causing problems.
They're blocking the streets, aren't they violating traffic codes?
Yeah, yeah, and that one.
Pushing snow on somebody else's property, and it's almost traffic passing, I mean, put stuff on somebody else's, pushing across the street on somebody else's yard.
It's not the issue of pushing it on other properties, it's pushing it to the middle of the street.
I think, I, the people that are.
That is prohibited.
Pushing it to the street or on other people's property. They have it all the time, half the time they're pushing it on the city property.
Right, they push it to the middle of the street, then it gets driven over and it becomes ice.
See, I think we need rules and regulations to, to do that. I'm just trying to figure out the balance between, you know.
But if we don't have people register, we're not going to help.
I know, I understand that.
And, and, yeah, registering is fairly simple, I mean, for these companies. If, if, I understand the concern about the fee for the small contractors, maybe only have a handful of clients in the village, and now you're running them out of town just because you've, you know, pushed, eaten up most of their profit with a $100 fee. So I don't mind a lower fee, I don't care what the fee is. I'm not here, I'm not doing it to, to collect money, but I think licensing just, those contractors are there every bit, or more often than a carpenter, or a plumber, or an electrician, and they have the potential for an impact equal to or greater than a carpenter, an electrician, or a plumber. So why shouldn't they be licensed?
Mr. Mars, I have a question about, would it be possible with regard to the landscape maintenance service contractor? Because the way it reads now, I mean, if my next door neighbor's son wants to mow my grass, he would fall under this. Could we just eliminate person, make it a firm or corporation or business, you know, something like that? I think we all know what we're trying, who we're trying to get to, and I certainly don't think it's your next door neighbor's kid who's going to mow your gar, your yard while you're gone on vacation. Can you think about that as an option?
According to this. I can't even shovel the locks at my rental properties without being a violation.
Yeah, and this, this seems.
We need to fix that. Yeah, I agree.
And there's lots of small businesses around town that cut grass, they just cut grass, and having to get these sureties and everything, I just, I just think it's wrong.
Well, I, I, I don't disagree with you, but I do think that, I mean, what's wrong with having them registered? Even if we, even if we.
Well, if you eliminate all the other requirements, I don't mind if they register.
You know, we, we register them so we know who's working in the village, and if someone works in the village and they have, when they come in to register, they're given a, lack of better term, code of conduct or code of business, and this is what we expect, and, and violations, you will lose your registration to work in this village.
And they need to have insurance. I mean, that is now an onerous requirement. You shouldn't be hiring a contractor, no matter how small they are, to work on your property who doesn't have insurance. You're putting yourself at great risk when you do that. So to say that, you know, to require them to have insurance is onerous, I, I definitely do not agree with that. I think we're doing a favor for our residents, we're, you know, we're helping them.
For the billion dollars.
Well, I think if we register them, we have to require insurance, otherwise we're opening ourselves up to.
I think insurance is different than a surety bond, though.
I'm just saying, I think that if we, if we register them, we know that they're here, and if we don't require insurance, we're saying, we don't care if you have insurance, and then that's opening us up to liability if something happens.
I think insurance is different than a surety bond.
What's the difference, Mr. Mars?
Well, the, the bond is more to protect the village in case they damage our right-of-way and that sort of thing. It's easy enough to rewrite this, to take the lawn cutters out from under the bond, if that's the direction everyone wants to go.
I just think it's been other, you know, there's both the, the public safety aspect, but also, and we've seen this in the recent past, is this is an unusual village in terms of our, our meandering right-of-way, in terms of where things get planted or don't get planted, and one advantage of registering these folks would be, we could provide them the information, the education about what it means to do, to do business in, in a kind of unique community where we have some, some unusual circumstances because of our landmark status. But, but I seem to hear consensus that, that we, we want to soften this with regard to the, the service contractors. Is that right? So can you take a step?
Absolutely.
Okay. Ben? Yes, sir.
Could I ask you for clarification?
Could you do it from the, could you do it from the podium, Mr. Wyatt?
Jack Wyatt, 165 Bartram. Just a clarification, is this discussion regarding just adding a couple of extra categories into our current licensing, or do some of these changes that you are talking about apply to the already existing licensing requirements for electricians and plumbers and anybody else who happens to be covered?
Mr. Mars, if you want to handle that?
Some of the changes are just adding landscape contractors into the contractor chapter. We also, at the same time, as applied to all businesses in town, redid sort of the section on hearings and revocations and license suspensions, specific to, to how those go, the fact that the village manager is the hearing officer. It's not a, it's not a significant change from, from the way you had it before, but we, we redid the whole process in order to add certain things about reasons that people's license could be lost.
Does there exist a, a comparison of where we are today versus what it's going to look like with the proposed, I mean, I think that would go a long way to help people understand what the requirements and changes are, because, you know, always, I'm hearing talk about, you know, performance bonds and one thing or another, and I don't remember specifically, you know, where, where all those things fit in.
Yeah, the bond, the bond and the insurance only apply to contractors.
Okay, but all contractors.
All contractors, and that's the way.
And is that different, is that different than it is today?
Nope.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for the question.
Mr. Wyatt, that shows the proposed changes versus.
I didn't know.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Ray.
It appears to me that you want to set up a distinction between a landscape contractor and a lawn maintenance contractor. I think you should define what a lawn maintenance contractor is, because it's very easy to slip into planting trees and still being a lawn maintenance guy, you know? Lawn maintenance should be restricted to cutting lawns, they also do such things as trim hedges and bushes and trees, and they also do such things as mulch beds around trees. And that's about the limit of what you want a lawn maintenance contractor to do. When they start building walls to create beds, when they start sort of slipping into planting a tree here and there, they've crossed the line into a landscape contractor, and you have to be more careful. That's my suggestion, that you define what those are. The other thing is, I didn't hear anything in what was talked about here distinguishing snow removal from, from landscape contractors. Is there provisions for snow removal contractors in, at all, in, in the ordinance?
No.
Should there be? I recognize the problem you're talking about. I also recognize that the snow removal contractors have enormous vehicles, and they can easily almost block a street. In fact, they do block the street, not only with the, the vehicle itself, but a trailer, which they pull behind, which is as big as the truck, you know? They look like the kinds of trucks that I drove in Army convoys. They're that big.
They're also much more likely to gouge or damage the curbs and sometimes the street. I think they should be called out as a separate category.
Yeah.
It's essentially the seasons, if we're going to do the summertime, we should do the winter. I don't think my voice will handle it, but could you just read the two definitions, Mr. Mars? Both for the landscape contractor and the maintenance service contractor?
Landscape contractor, which is above and beyond the land, maintenance and mowing that we've been talking about. Landscape contractors, any person, firm, or corporation principally engaged in the business of installing landscaping materials and constructing yard improvements such as grade changes, walkways, patios, and the like. So that gets into the walls that you were talking about.
Planting trees.
Planting trees is allowed under the next definition, landscape maintenance service contractor. Any person, firm, or corporation engaged in the improvement and/or maintenance of the appearance of an area of land by planting and/or maintaining trees, shrubs, grass, or other plants. The provision of services covered by this definition include the cultivation or beautification of gardens, the trimming, cutting, or pruning of hedges, plants, and/or grass, the application of chemical or natural fertilizers, nutrients, pesticides, and herbicides, the raking, sweeping, or gathering for removal of landscape waste and other yard debris, or other similar activities. So one question for the board is whether planting should be taken out of there and moved up to landscape contractor.
I think planting of trees and shrubs up to landscape contractor, as well as the pruning because, of trees, because that's where they're going to be bringing big equipment onto your property.
I, I, I agree with that. I think if we could get rid of the cutting of the grass or trimming the shrubs, manicuring your shrubs, and have that as the maintenance provider, I think then we could, we could lighten that, because there's less risk there as well. Because, I mean, there's a huge risk in the pesticides and herbicides, right? And again, back to our parkway, if they, you know, like they did at the, at the football field and put the wrong chemicals on and killed all the grass in the parkway, I mean, we, we do need to have some sort of recourse at that point.
And that, that's where the bond would come in.
Yeah, see, so to me, those need to be up into the landscape contractor language, and then we, we have the opportunity to reduce down the maintenance side.
I think, but that would capture your Scotts, TruGreen, Kemblon, you think they should be considered landscape contractors?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're bonded, I mean, they're bonded, they do our house.
Again, then I'd like to see some more research on whether other villages require that, because if we're the only ones requiring it, they're going to be less likely to do business in our village, too.
I believe that the one thing that Scotts is doing is that fertilize and, and.
They do.
Put, and set the sites on the lawns.
So now everyone's a contractor.
I see it all the time, my neighbor doesn't, plus you, with Joe, you know?
So I think that, my opinion is that's a little too broad, then, for a contractor.
Okay, well, I think, I think we, you see where we're going, right, Mr. Mars?
Except for the, the pesticides, are we putting pesticides with landscape contractors or lawn cutters?
Maybe you should just separate pesticides out. I mean, don't they have to have special requirements anyway, because they're handling pesticides?
They're state. You know, like in Scotts, I mean, my guy comes through.
Any of the guys, is it?
Yeah, throws a couple of bags of Scotts in the little thing and runs up and down.
I, I would like to know what other villages do have, TruGreen and Kemblon, those companies, or.
Yeah, I think there might be a distinction between commercially available only, as opposed to ones that homeowners can purchase. I think I saw that.
Something that you have to have licensing for because of the nature of the chemical, right?
Right.
Okay, so, so we just have a little more homework to do in terms of what other, of what other communities are doing?
And one other question that I had, based on the, the snow removal aspect, you know, trustee Hamilton mentioned the potential damage that they could cause to public property. Would you be okay with having them post a bond? Post a bond?
You're talking about snow removal? Oh, absolutely, yeah. I think that's much more serious, because, you know, they're dealing with those big trucks, and they can't see what they're doing because of the snow.
I mean, that really, in many ways, that was kind of the genesis of this whole concept when the manager Francis and I were talking, are these companies that have large vehicles in our, in our town? I mean, that, that's really where this kind of came from, because you have a very substantial, especially with snow removal and things like that, or some of this heavier equipment. You know, it puts not only our, our residents, but the village itself at some, at some risk. So that was kind of where this originated. Mr. Paul.
I just wanted to be, to be clear for people watching at home, we're, we're not talking about homeowners doing their own work here, right?
Correct.
We're just talking about contractors, so residents don't need to worry that, you know, they have to get permits or anything else for any of these items we're talking about. It's just strictly contractors.
I don't know if kids still cut lawns, but what about the kid next door cutting lawns?
We, we mentioned that. We want, we, I assume everyone agrees, we don't want to include them in this.
Exactly.
Snow removal can almost fall in the same category that we're doing with lawn maintenance, because what, what I'm hearing is everyone is, is more concerned about a guy that does snow removal that's driving a truck versus someone that does snow, the snowblower. Because there are, there are companies that just do snowblower work, and I, you know, I, they don't nev, merely do the, the damage as, as trucks do. So I mean, that could almost fall in that.
A truck with a plow.
That snow maintenance, snow contractor type of category, where you put one higher and one lower.
That's a good idea. I don't think we want to try to regulate the guy who comes up and knocks on your doors and says, kind of clear sidewalks, right? So.
But everyone's free to shovel their own snow.
That's right, exactly. Anything else with regard to draft ordinance, before we take a look at it next time? And we're, we're going to, you know, there's no rush in this, we'll keep working at it until we get it right. Okay. There are no considerations this evening. Under new business, I, this seems apropos to mention, there was a, there was considerable talk on, both on Facebook and over on the Riverside Exchange after our last kind of freak ice event about a number of folks in the village not cleaning their sidewalks of ice and snow. There was some talk on these, on these forums about whether or not the village should have an ordinance requiring residents to, to maintain their sidewalks. I just bring that up for your consideration. Seems to me personally that that is something that falls more within the, in the range of just being good neighbors. If we, if you know of people who, because of infirmities of some kind or another are unable to do that, you know, they should, they should contact the village, and we, of course, will do everything we can to, to help them. But I would be, personally, I'd be a little hesitant to start trying to legislate something like that, but if anyone feels differently, you know, we can certainly look at that in the future.
I think this last weather event was a little bit different, because it all stuck and froze. Because there's a difference between people that just ignore it and people that couldn't get it off because it was just really miserable, because.
It was, it was a very odd.
If we had an ordinance right now, I would be in violation of it, and I spent three hours out there with an ice pick trying to get it off, right? So I mean, this one was a specifically.
And you probably damaged your sidewalk doing that.
I hope I didn't, I'll find out.
By the way, it's, it's not his sidewalk. It's not his sidewalk.
Any other items of new business, please?
Because it was right around the holidays, a lot of people were out of town, too, and so.
We didn't get it up that, with that.
Well, 24 hours, yeah.
I mean, luckily, we were out of town, but our neighbor was nice enough to do it, so, but, for a lot of people, that.
So you played the all-around. So you played the all-around-town card, huh?
Every time it snows, we all turn off the light.
Turn off the lights, pull the curtains. Okay. Any other new business? We do not have a need for an executive session this evening, so I'd ask for a motion second to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Ms. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lumsden. Please call the roll.
Trustee Hammond.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Sotterby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Meeting is adjourned.